May I have your attention, please? Being 7:05 PM and with a quorum of 208 voters, I ask that you take -- actually, I'm going to ask you to remain standing while we salute the flag. Flag's over this way on the corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Everyone, please take their seats so we can get started with the special town meeting on Monday, October 15, 2018. Everyone in the hall should please have the salmon-colored motion sheets that contain the motions, which give a more detailed explanation of the articles and the Selectmen Finance Committee Planning Board, Board of Health, Personal Advisory Committee, and Capital Planning Recommendations. These are on the table in the back of the gym. Also, on the table initially when you first come in on the left, actually on the right, there are spare reading glasses, if anyone's forgotten their reading glasses, that you can borrow. And there are also headsets. If you have a hard time hearing, you just turn the switch on, put them on your head, and you'll be able to hear things more clearly. Anyone who needs them is welcome to use them. I am Susan McNeil-Spohler. I am the moderator of town meeting, and it gives me great honor to convene this special town meeting of the town of Westford, Massachusetts, in the United States of America. As we have been meeting since March 2, 1730, that's longer than our country has existed. First, I would like to recognize Glenn C. Core and Ellen Dusset, who served on the Finance Committee. Glenn started serving in 2014, and Ellen started in 2010. I would like to introduce our two new members of the Finance Committee, Patricia Pilachowski and Beth Morrison. If you wish to address town meeting at any time this evening, I ask you to approach one of the three microphones that we have set up. Tell us your name, tell us where you live in Westford. We have three microphones, and I will describe the purpose of them to you. The middle microphone is for questions and for those looking for information. If we are discussing a motion and you are opposed, I ask you to please go to the opposed microphone on my right and your left. And the one on my left and your right is for those who wish to speak in favor. Each of the microphones has a sign on it. Please address all questions to me, the moderator, and I will find the best person or persons to answer your query. What this allows the moderator to do is to balance a debate so that you can hear from some in favor and some opposed, and we can have a balanced discussion. If you absolutely can't make it to the appropriate microphone, that does not preclude you from speaking. Please go to the closest microphone to you. If you have any questions at any time, go to the center microphone and say, "Madam Moderator, I have a question." That's the part of parliamentary law that you need to know, and we will get your question answered. In order not to take the meeting's time to read the motions verbatim, I would ask for a motion to accept the wording for the motions as printed on the salmon-colored sheets and filed in the town clerk's office on October 15, 2018, and to waive the reading by the moderator. You will not only have them in front of you, but Mike Wells, the Director of Technology, will project every motion on the screen behind me. Do I have a motion to waive the reading? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, anyone have any questions, first of all? No questions? Okay, all is in favor? All opposed? Thank you. It passes. Town meeting is where we come together in a civil assembly as a community in a tradition that's older than the Commonwealth itself. Here are the rules I look forward to everyone following. All debate will be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner and a calm and collected tone. All questions and comments will be directed to the moderator and limited to the subject being debated. No comments of a personal nature are allowed. In keeping with Westford Town Meeting tradition, no applause or other responses for any debater is allowed. If you have any amendments, please put them in writing and hand them to the moderator. Motion for town employees and non-residents. Before we get into the financial discussions, we have members on the floor who are not voters from Westford, from Westford Town Council, Assistant Town Manager, various department heads, and for them to be able to address the meeting, our bylaws say that we must vote, and there needs to be a 2/3 majority to allow this. So I would ask for a motion to allow all staff who are non-voters of the town, as well as town council and consultants hired by the town of Westford, to sit with their respective committees and be able to address this meeting. May I have this motion? Thank you. May I have a second? Any questions? All is in favor? All opposed? Motion passes with 2/3 majority. Are there any questions from the voters about protocol, procedure, or order? Hearing none, we move along. Article 1. Article 1. I have a motion to dismiss Article 1 as printed in the motion sheets. So moved. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approved fiscal year 2019 budget adjustments. I have a motion under Article 2 as printed in the motion sheets. So moved. Is there a second? Any discussion? Jody, would you like to get up and explain? Please go to the microphone.
I'm Charles Stark at 14 Christopher Road, the Chair of the Recycling Commission. In the 30 years Westford has been recycling, the town has often had to make changes as the markets have changed, usually to allow us to recycle more. For example, in 1988, the only paper we could recycle were newspapers. Then, our vendor also accepted junk mail and magazines, then telephone books. Where you and I put in our curbside recycling is a commodity, just like oil and wheat. It only has value if our contractor, Republic, can sell what they collect from your bins and toters to other companies who can make use of it. 20 years ago, our paper went to make the book covers for the Harry Potter books. Our glass became glass fall for paving roads. Never has the town seen the market for recycling changes drastically, and not for the better as it has the last two years. The buyers are getting much more demanding about the quality of the product they will buy. Some contaminations are baddies that used to be good. Now Republic can be fined if they deliver loads filled with plastic bags, which is a real baddie, or plastic toys, spaghetti sauce still in the glass jar, mixed in with recyclables. And that cost is being passed on to the town. Sometimes whole loads are rejected, and Republic pays per ton to dispose of them. In addition, the largest buyer of the recycling that is generated in the United States has been China. And in 2017, China adopted a new policy that sets the accepted contamination in paper at 1%, with further restrictions on metals and plastics, too. China is rejecting shipments at the dock. This has all made recycling costs more. Lowell, for one, has gone from paying nothing to have its recycling hauled away to shelling out as much as $75 a ton, which adds up to roughly half a million dollars a year, according to Gunther Wellenstein, who's Lowell's recycling director. So why don't we just stop recycling? Because in 1992, Massachusetts established waste bans that prohibits cans and bottles from going to a landfill or an incinerator. In 1994, plastic and paper were added to the waste bans. Westford's trash has gone to an incinerator since the dump closed in 1985. So the Recycling Commission sees no alternative this evening than to ask town meeting to vote for this $80,000 additional cost for this year. Going forward, we will be asking you for your help as we work in every way possible to make the quality of recycling so good that there'll be no need for fines or additional fees. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone has any questions? We have three different items here. $80,000 for recycling expenses, town manager expenses of $200,000, and then Water Enterprise Personal Services, $8,000, and Water Enterprise Reserve Fund. If anyone has a question about this, if they would say hold, I will read these again. Recycling expenses, $80,000. Town manager expenses, $200,000. Water Enterprise Personal Services, $8,000. Water Enterprise Reserve Fund, $200,000. Did I hear a hold on town manager expenses? Okay. We will vote on recycling expenses, Water Enterprise Personal Services, and Water Enterprise Reserve Fund. I have a motion under Article 2 as printed on the motion sheets. Is there a second? Any discussion? Besides this? Okay, all is in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. So now we will discuss town manager expenses of $200,000.
So my name's Tom Clay, and we're going to bring you up to speed on what's been happening on the efforts around school safety and violence prevention in Westford. As many of you know, it was brought up in the last town meeting, it's been brought up in many public forums since. What are we doing to make sure that we're really ensuring the safety and wellness of all of our students, really all the community members here in Westford? So we have been doing a number of things along the way, really driven by the schools and by the police, and I'll identify what some of those have been. So we're not standing still. There's been a lot of activity going on on this very important issue. But we thought it was a good opportunity to form a task force, and I'll describe who the members of that task force are in just a second, to look at this more carefully and maybe seek some outside advice from people who've been through this journey before and experts in the field, to help us put together a really comprehensive plan that we can begin to build into our planning going forward that looks really carefully at both facility security and health and behavior wellness. So what's happened so far, and this is a -- I'm going to go through this quickly. This is sort of a list of some of the activities that have been going on over the past 12 to 24 months related to this important topic already. These are things that have been done with the schools in coordination with our first responders, the police and fire. So there's been a number of meetings with administrative staff and highlighted potential issues. There's been additional training for the school resource officers, so there's more flexibility and more redundancy for that coverage. There's been a number of grants filed for for additional safety equipment. We've held a number of active shooter drills at the Westford Academy and also in the town buildings that have included all the different town resources. We've done a number of simulations with the dispatch center to make sure the dispatch center is well-equipped to handle all the things that would happen in an event like that. And we've held two forums to get community input on public safety as it relates to schools. We've also done a full ALICE drill, which is the program that we use for active shooter response in a number of the schools that are listed here. We've done additional training for the school staff, bus drivers and substitutes. We've done a reunification drill with the school administration, and the school resource officer and the school dean have collaborated in producing a school public safety video on proper barricading and cover techniques for students. So a large amount of activity. A few more. We've worked with our state rep on school resource officer legislation and looking at ways that we might be able to lock down the rooms in a more straightforward way. We've looked at multi-hazard and MERP plans, which are multi-hazard evacuation medical emergency response plans. We've looked at continued opportunities to improve through the dispatch center, and we've done a number of train-the-trainer classes with paramedics around some of the narcotics-related threats that we're seeing here in our community. So who's on this task force that's been assembled? I want to talk to you a little bit about who's on it, and then what we're asking for today and what we think some of the next steps might be. So there are two members of the Board of Selectmen, Scott and myself. Avery Adam, the Chair of the School Committee, is also on this. We have representatives from the Board of Health. Superintendent Olson is involved in this as well. We also have the superintendent from Neshoba Tech who's taken part of this, and Neshoba Tech has done a number of very interesting things in this regard that are a little bit different from what we've done here in town, at least so far. The town manager, and then very importantly, we have the police chief and the fire chief involved. And really, the mandate that we've taken on is to look at the town and school safety practices and then provide recommendations to the Board of Selectmen and the school committee on what we find, and to build those recommendations into future planning. So we began to meet in September. Early on, it became clear, both from our experts, like our excellent chief, fire chief, and police chief, that we had done a lot of good things so far using our own input, but it seemed like a good time for us to bring in some expert input from people who've seen this happen at other schools, been through this journey before. We thought, after looking at a little bit of the early data and early studies, that we really, although they fit very closely together, the consultants who typically do this work typically are either more focused on school security and facility safety or health and behavioral wellness and violence prevention, sort of detection intervention on that side. And so the recommendation that this committee has come up with is that we actually prepare a request for proposal to get expert assessment on both of those things. Now, we'll keep those integrated together. We expect that we'll have a lot of blending, but because many of the schools that we've looked at so far have already done this work, have typically found that there's a strong body of expertise on the facility assessment side and on the behavioral health side, we think it's best if we pursue and get some expert input on each. We are preparing the draft request for proposal now with school security. We've identified a couple of the key things that we hope to cover, which I'll cover on the next slide. We looked at other towns that are about our size who've gone through this so far, and the range of -- it's a pretty wide range of what the cost of these assessments are. These are detailed assessments of the facilities with detailed recommendations about what would be best to do, best balance for students and for staff at each of the buildings. There's a pretty big range. We've seen most of the bids come in between, say, 80 and 100 for towns that have gone through this, 80 and $100,000 on the facility side. Some of the areas of focus that we'd like to cover, we want to look closely, the recommendation from the people who are focusing most closely on that, the Superintendent Olson, fire chief and police chief, is to look at access control, both interior and exterior, and look at entrance screening, staff protocols for visitors, and facility before-and-after-hour security measures. Evaluate the documentation and training of security and safety procedures, including detailed crisis plans and procedures, specific evacuation and reunification plans. Evaluate prospective new employee screening procedures. So we want to add to what happens when someone comes to be part of our team taking care of students, or being a librarian, or serving the town. Make sure we're doing an appropriate background screen for those folks. We want to evaluate prospective new employee screening procedures. Just mention that. We want to look at the school resource officers. So there's been a lot of discussion about what's the right balance for us, for Westford, in terms of school resource officer presence in the schools. We want to look closely at that and see what best practice recommends, what's the right level of police presence for the different levels of schools that we have in Westford. We want to look at emergency response capabilities and the instant command system. And one of the best practices that I think we can learn a lot from other schools and also from Neshoba Tech is to consider creating a geo-fence, which would allow us to monitor social media for key terms, and so we can get some early detection. It's the case that most people who cause a violent event in a school have told many people about it and posted on social media about it before they do it. And there is technology available today that would let us go through the publicly-available social media landscape, identify key terms, and then receive those in the form of alerts. So that's something that we're learning about, but we want to be part of this best-practice study that we'd like to engage in. We also think equally important, in some ways more important, is to focus on behavioral wellness, behavioral health, and violence prevention. We're preparing a separate RFP in that area. Again, we've been fortunate because there's a number of other schools like Lexington and Thalmann that have recently kicked off efforts like this. We've got a pretty good budgetary range between $80,000 and $100,000. And I'll talk to you about some of the things that are typically included in that. Often that would include what is the behavioral health and wellness and violence prevention programs that have proven fact-based track records? In literature, there are some programs that have an excellent track record of reducing violence in the ninth, 10th, 11th grade range. Some of those programs actually start, though, at much younger grades. So we want to take a look at those programs, and some of those we already are likely doing, but we want to make sure we look at, make sure we've got the best ones and that we're using those most effectively. We want to use enhanced use of training programs and technology for early detection for those who might pose a risk to themselves or others. Again, many people who either cause harm to themselves or others in an environment of a school have told a number of people about it or posted about on social media. We want to make sure that we've got a good mechanism to, that all that information gets back to the people that can help as quickly as possible. We'd like to identify and implement positive interventions for those that are at risk, so we want to be actively reaching out to people that are showing signs of risk. We want to have sustained community education on what these resources are. A lot of people, a lot of parents, may not be aware of what all the programs are that are currently in effect, so we want to have a sustained way we're communicating with everybody what some of these tools and practices are that can help. And we want to look carefully at other communities for other ideas that we haven't thought of. We're aware that there are things that we don't know and want to make sure that we're asking about other good practices and ideas that other communities have generated that we might borrow from. So what we're asking for today is a funding request to support both of these requests for proposals, to do both of these expert consulting studies. We'd like to pull them together relatively quickly and be able to have that information, some of the early findings for these studies, by the time we come back to you in spring town meeting. And then the school committee and the town resources will have the inputs they need to do the kind of detailed planning that we'd like to do to get some of these recommendations actually into the budget and into reality and helping to keep us safe. It's a combined $200,000, so we're budgeting, we forecasted, it's roughly $100,000 for each, so that's where the $200,000 comes from. And we will certainly adopt what we can as we go. So if we learn things that we can redirect resources to, I think the school committee or the town will do that. If it's things that require new resources, then they can fall into our planning as early as next year. Possibly, there may be some things that we bring forward in the spring that might help us have an impact on this really important area. And that's it. Scott, did I miss anything?
Thanks, Tom. One thing I would mention is, I think there's been a lot of focus on school safety, and rightly so, but we have a lot of town buildings that are also open to the public that have had incidents with the public in the past, and so we want to make sure that the library, for example, Town Hall, the Roden Bush, also have this investigation to say, what is best practice to keep our staff safe in these buildings, just as if they were a school? So it is what broader than we had maybe discussed in the spring. I think it's important that we keep all of our town staff safe.
Thank you.
Marilyn Frank, 6 Chamberlain Road. At the strategic planning event that we had this past time, I mentioned the fact that our schools are open during election. That costs nothing, so that we don't have our schools open when we have an election day. Have you discussed that? I support what you're doing, but have you discussed this no-cost item? And if so, when will that be implemented? Certainly not November 6.
Good evening. Bill Olson, Superintendent Schools. Marilyn, we have discussed that. And beginning with the next year's school calendar, the 2019-2020 school year, we'll have either full professional development days or no school on election days, so that we can ensure the security of our staff and students. Yes, so if there are four elections, what we'll do is, as I said, we'll plan so that it's minimal intrusion to the length of the school year to the greatest extent possible and maximum benefit for our staff in terms of professional development. So I want to thank everyone for reminding me. We actually did change one of our PD days this May, this upcoming May in this year's calendar, so thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, that's right.
Thank you, Bill.
Paul Fosbender, 14 Texas Road. When I see an article like this, really two things come to mind. One is, should we be doing this work? And the second is, how should we pay for it? I think your presentation really did a good job of presenting the why we should do it part of it. But the question I have is, is this the best way to fund it? It says we're taking the money from free cash. In my experience, free cash is usually not free. There's some opportunity cost for using it for this purpose versus a lot of the other purposes that we could be using the free cash for. So what will we not be doing because we're taking the $200,000 from free cash?
Dan, can you answer that for us, please?
Dan O'Donnell, Finance Director. So we recently had our free cash certified at 4.3 million. That is about $500,000 more than last year, so there is some capacity to have this expense this fiscal year. Typically, what we use free cash for is any surplus supplementals to budgets at the town meeting, any capital items, and we usually fund our SOE deficit from it. So with my projections, we do have the capacity to absorb that this year.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Dennis Galvin, 90 Conker Road. Madam Moderator, I have an amendment for this item. Should I give it to you?
So we have an amendment to the second item in Article 2. And so what we will do is, like, oh, beautiful. Okay, so we will vote. Okay, all right. So what we will do is we will vote to accept the amendment. I'm sorry. I have a motion to amend. I need a second. Sure. Okay, I will read the whole, and I will read the amendment, I will read the article, and I'm sorry, the motion, then I will read the red part as well. That the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $200,000 in order to supplement the following fiscal year 2019 operating budgets to the fund and town school safety task force consultant requests for proposals. Here's the amendment. And further, that these funds be allocated for the sole purpose of assessing, evaluating, and improving the security of the Westford Public Schools. Now, gentlemen, who put it forth?
Yeah, Dennis Galvin. Okay. Madam Moderator, thank you very much, members of the town meeting. The purpose of this particular amendment is to try to capture the concern that we believe the town parents, particularly the schools, have expressed over the course of the last year or so as a result of some incidents both nationally and locally. There are three issues that this, that the current item, we feel, or I believe, is deficient. Number one, it doesn't reflect the priority, correct priority. Number two, the resources are not sufficient. And number three, it doesn't capture the urgency for this. Now, let me try to take this and explain it a little bit more. I just explained the priority. There is a issue nationally and locally as well over the concern over the schools. It is the highest and most vulnerable and most devastating asset that we could lose in this town are the children in our schools. The resources that have been expended for this are not sufficient. They're asking for $200,000. They're going to split it between mental health and physical security resources. First of all, my comment is, that is an artificial distinction. First of all, my comment is, that is an artificial distinction. They have to be comprehensive, they have to be unified and synthesized as one evaluation. Second of all, just to do the, the public schools, say, three schools, the, the Westford Academy and the two middle schools, would probably cost you about $200,000. Spreading $100,000 across the town for fiscal security evaluations, as well as for mental health evaluations, would dissipate resources and you'd wind up with a mediocre product at best. So we think that this is not sufficient, and we need to be able to adapt on it. Now, the last thing I'd say is, nobody here is objecting to the town doing a security assessment. In fact, it's, I applaud the support of selectmen for, for taking that on. The point that we're trying to make here is, that can be done, and as you've already expressed, as you already heard from them, there's a extended period of time before this gets implemented. We just think the public schools should come up to the front and be dealt with first, and that's the purpose of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, Tom Klein, please.
I just want to respond to the three points quickly about the priority, the resources, and the, and the urgency. So I, I would respectfully disagree, based on the work that, that the committee has done so far about where the most good can be done to actually keep people safe and reduce the risk of violence. So I think that we really have to look at the behavioral health aspects alongside the physical security side. So I wouldn't agree that, that, that one should come first, or the other should go in a different direction. From a resources point of view, the best information we have is what other towns with similar building counts and similar-sized populations have done. That's where our estimates have come from. So I, and again, we're just talking about doing the planning and assessment. The actual implementation is a whole other realm that would come before you again in budgeting. So we're not suggesting that we can do the whole job, but in terms of just doing this first assessment, the communities that we've looked at that have done work like this are within this range. And in terms of the urgency, what we've done so far is, we've actually split our committee into two working groups. One is looking facilities, and that's where the chief, the fire chief, Bill Olson, sits. And then we have another group that's looking at the behavioral health. That's where the Department of Health reps are and some other folks that are really focused on that. So I think we can do both well. I think we can give both a high level of urgency. I don't think we have to make that choice.
Thank you, Tom. Gentlemen, the microphone.
I have a three-part.
Can you tell us who you are and where you live?
Bruce Rosenberg, 123 Westview Drive.
Thank you.
I have a three-part interconnected set of questions and clarifications. And I think the first one, Tom, you started to address, and that is, the $200,000 is to prepare two RFPs. It's not the implementation funds. Related to that, then I would ask you, my experience with both putting together many RFPs and responding to them in my work in the government sector, is, is I'm presuming that there is some type of budget that you have in mind, so that when this RFP is indeed put together, somebody knows whether they're, whether they're building a soccer field or a football stadium. And the third part of this is that recognizing that every community has their own very specific needs. Our facilities, our schools are different, therefore how to protect them and so on. Our demographics are different in terms of behavioral needs, but there is some, let's call it related or, or leverage that we can get from related communities. So the third part of my question is, what can we do through some economy of related communities? I'm not talking about Westford and someplace in the western part of the state, but a Westford, a Littleton, a Carlisle, or whatever, that, that might have some similar related demographics and geolocations.
Thank you. Tom, please.
Just a semantics point, I think, I think, I think we are in agreement. This is just, this initial phase is not to do the work, but it is to have the planning and detailed community survey and all of that done. The other question related to, are we giving guidance to the people doing the work about what the end budget might be? We, we have not come to that point yet. And so I think that'll have to be part of the discovery, is, for instance, if we come back and say, we want to have a difference in the way that we do access control in the church, not the church, access control in the schools, I think we'd have to learn a little bit more about that, so we don't yet have that budgetary amount. That does give us kind of a range of outcome, but I think we're going to have to learn a little bit more before we can bring that kind of information to you. And another question is, is there some sort of general best practice we can pull in sort of quickly without spending a lot of money and spend the money on things that are unique to Westford? That, that is very much our intention. So our hope is the consultants we bring in have a lot of best practice, and I think our chief in schools already have a lot of best practice on board. But we want to look at each of these buildings. What's the right thing for K2? What's the right thing for 3 to 3.5, you know, in that setting for that actual structure? I think that's where most of the money on facilities side will come.
Thank you. I'll take one more question in the center for right now.
I'm Main Street. Could Mr. Galvin please clarify whether or not he was speaking as a voter, or whether or not he was representing the amendment made, proposed by the Finance Committee? And if the latter, whether the Finance Committee unanimously supports the amendment or what their position is? Thank you.
Jerry? Thank you.
Jerry, Care Finance Committee. If you look at our vote on this, we were like 4-4, 3 against, and 2 abstain. So it was a very unsatisfying vote. And I attribute that to the fact that we really weren't involved in this process up until now. So we were trying to find out information either from the selectmen's meeting last week or right before this meeting. So what it exhibits is confusion on our part. Now, talking to the selectmen, one of the things we've asked for is going forward, that a member of the Finance Committee be on this group, so we can understand all of the ins and outs of it and contribute to it. Now, as far as the amendment, that's, his amendment is a private citizen, not a, that is a member of the Finance Committee. So the Finance Committee is what I said. We voted 4-3-2, and we will try to resolve that in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. Opposed?
Actually, this is just the closest microphone. I'd like to speak to the amendment, and I'm in favor of the amendment. Alisa Nakashian, Holzberg Betty Lane. Back last March, February or March, we had an unfortunate incident. I don't need to go into that. Lot of parents spoke up and said, what about safety? What about our kids, kindergartners, first graders? We need to make sure that they're safe. So months have gone by, we're going to be coming up on a year, and I appreciate the work that this committee has done, and I appreciate you're trying to widen it into town buildings as well. But you know what? I'm not worried about the police. They've got guns. I'm not worried about Town Hall. You got 911 right next door. I'm worried about our kids at schools. There's no guarantees in the world, and even if you handle mental health in this community, that doesn't preclude somebody from another neighboring town coming in and, and moving along some unfortunate path. What I want to see is an expedited path towards addressing safety in our schools. And then if we need to do more, come on back. Let us know what we need to do. But as a parent, I'd like to see that we answer the call of the parents who spoke up last summer, last fall. I don't remember when it was. It was last year. We're, we're almost a year into this, and I'd support this amendment. I think we need to focus on the schools first and then, and then figure out where we go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Al Prescott, Lake Shore Drive North. This is my first time ever addressing town meeting. I'm quite nervous.
Welcome.
How are you? Thank you.
Don't worry. You're doing fine.
Madam, Madam Moderator, we are having this discussion tonight for one reason and one reason only. It's not because of a spat of mass shootings at libraries, fire departments, or police departments. The reality is, we are having this discussion solely because of the horrific acts that have occurred in schools. And the reality is that when you look at the FBI report for mass shootings, the percentage of shootings in public buildings is 71% occur in schools. That's where the focus needs to be. I applaud this amendment, but that is laser focus. Go where the problem is and solve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Center microphone, please.
Oscar Logley, 1 Patton Lane. I am confused by what we're going for. I think, I was under the impression that this money was going to go for the studies themselves. It looks like, from the wording, and I'm, I do a lot of proposals and request for proposals, if this is only to fund people to prepare proposals, then, then this needs to be amended. Because what we're looking for is to have the actual money being spent on the studies themselves. A request for proposal is not, is what it says. Can there be a clarification as what you're really looking for?
Exactly. It is a, it is funding the study itself.
Then I believe the wording is incorrect.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just speaking to the amendment, and I agree that.
Your name and where you live?
Jim Gauzo, Carolina Lane. The end of the original text there where it says to, to fund the Town and School Safety Task Force Consultant Requests for Proposals, this shouldn't be to fund the request for proposals. The request for proposals is going to be produced by the committee. This should be used to respond to those proposals by assessing, evaluating, and improving the security of the schools. And I'm, I'm emphasizing it should be up to schools. That's where the emphasis needs to be. That's where the urgency is, and that should happen first.
Center microphone. Oh, sorry. Would you like to address that, Scott? Center microphone, please.
My name is Hayo Kester. I live on Providence Road. I'm a library trustee, and I'm speaking here both as an individual, as well as a member of the Board of Library Trustees, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire board because we've not discussed this many. The way I read this, my question is, does it specifically leave out the library? If so, I'd like to speak to that.
Okay. Dennis, please.
I missed a question. We're trying to figure out the legality of proposals or RFPs, but what was the question once again?
Does this leave out the library amendment?
The amendment is clear. It speaks to the Westford schools for the first time. It doesn't exclude it, but the priority goes to the schools for this, this go-around. It relates to the $200,000 that's been appropriated here. That's what that's, that pertains to, and that's what the wording pertains to as well.
Okay, Dennis, like, may I speak to this?
Certainly.
Thank you, Dennis. That's what I was afraid of. As a trustee, I'm very concerned about the safety of our staff and patrons. And it's been a concern, and we've mentioned that at selectmen's meetings as well. Yes, all the emphasis has been, and the media, et cetera, it's been on schools. But I'd like to remind folks that within, I believe, the last six months or so, there have been a couple of major issues in libraries and the Commonwealth. The town of Arlington, a person was murdered in the library. I can't remember exactly what the other incident was all about.
Boston, Boston Library and killed.
Boston, Winchester. So, so it's not just the big nasty cities that have this problem. So I would strongly encourage you to strike, vote against amendment. And if the amendment passes, I'd like to make a second amendment afterwards.
Okay.
Ori Blumenthal, 14 Plain Road. I support this amendment because it speaks to the priorities. The higher threat, the higher risk is at the schools. Therefore, schools must be addressed first. So let us do that. And a small comment, I would like to learn from everybody else. So how are you going to select the experts to provide those RFP? How and, and where?
Thank you. Scott, can you address that, or Tom?
I was going to say that the selectmen took a vote on the amendment, and the selectmen opposed the amendment 5 to 0. And the rationale is, as Al mentioned, okay, 71% of these incidents are in schools, 29% aren't. Our, our most popular library programs are, are young children reading programs. The Rodenbush Community Center, when it reopens, will be primarily for youth programs. So they do that somehow only our children are vulnerable in schools. It's just not true. We have town buildings, we're not looking at the fire department or the police department, they've got axes and guns, but we are looking at senior center, library, Town Hall, and Rodenbush as places that are soft targets, where we get opportunities for bad things to happen, and we need to make sure we address and plan for that.
Okay.
With regard to the question about selection of, of experts, so we're fortunate that there are a number of communities that we can look to and look at people who submitted bids to those communities for similar types of work. So we have a population of, you know, eight to 10 providers in each case that have experience and a track record to do this work. And what will happen, I believe, is that the sub, we haven't agreed on this as a committee, but I would expect that the subcommittees will, will take, will do interviews, will, will review resumes, probably narrow down to a smaller field, then the whole committee will look at them, and then I think we'll probably ask the school committee and the board of selectmen to weigh in as well. So it, it would be like selecting a, a service provider for, you know, many, many other kinds of services. Find people with experience and skills, do a careful screen review.
Center microphone, please.
Jim Allen, 104 Plain Road. It was briefly touched on just recently that Rodenbush is in the list, but what about Frost and Rowdy at Old Man?
Scott?
Yes, they're, they're, all, all three are basically part of the Rodenbush, I guess all three are included.
And they are not part of Westford Public Schools?
They are not.
So they would be excluded by this amendment?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. In favor again? You have a question?
To augment my statement, everything except for the police department is a soft target. Just face it. And it is unclear whether the proposed resources would be enough to investigate everything. Therefore, once again, prioritize. We want to protect everything. I doubt that you can. So do what you can first.
Thank you. Shirley?
The school committee took a quick vote, and we would be against the amendment. We are also concerned that that would exclude the mental health, behavioral health piece of the article.
Center microphone?
Hi, Jennifer Belandry, Almeria Circle. I'm a parent of a child in the Westford Public Schools, and I'm also a licensed independent clinical social worker trained in violence prevention and mental health. And I think we definitely need to put a lot of money into supporting the schools in relation to violence prevention. Also, as far as libraries go, being a soft target, and the incident that happened in Winchester and other issues in public libraries where people who are sometimes homeless or sometimes members of marginalized populations tend to go during the day, I think it's important to put some kind of a protocol in the libraries in place, as well as the schools, which I fully support. So I'm wondering if the town would consider a friendly amendment to include libraries in this.
If you have an amendment, you hand it to, you put it in writing and you hand it to me, and then we can have two amendments on the floor at once. Center microphone?
Hi, Juliette Mound, Boston Road. Question to the group in relation to this proposal and all the details that you've provided.
The questions come to me, and then I, I pass it to the personally appropriate people.
For the panel, Madam Moderator, can you please ask them, based on the research that they did and the concerns voiced here related to priorities, is the amount of $200,000 sufficient to provide this town a reasonable assessment by spring for those RFPs without adding risk to our school populations and to properly cover assessments for the library and other public domains?
Tom Klein, please.
We have so far, Juliette, is, is communities have done similar scopes of work, and they've quoted amounts that are between, say, $80,000 and $100,000 for each. So in each case, we've got four or five examples of communities doing this work. So I would answer the question saying, based on everything we can see so far from the, the work that we've done, other communities at least have successfully been able to kick off programs very close to what we're doing, similar-sized communities, similar level of complexity. And I'm confident that we can get a, you know, get the work done and certainly get a great start. There's some possibility we could come back after doing more work and say, we had to phase this in a certain way, we were able to get 80% of what we wanted. I, I can't say that yet because we haven't done the work, but I think in terms of what we can know from where we I can't say that yet because we haven't done the work, but I think in terms of what we can know from where we are, those are good numbers.
Okay, in favor?
Caroline Fisher Depot Street. I'd like to call the question.
I will allow one more. No?
I was here before she was.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't see her. I've been trying to pay attention to everything here, so I saw her before I saw you.
Steve Brederly, 16 Phillips Drive. Folks, we're getting way ahead of ourselves.
I'm sorry. We've called the question, so. Okay, a second. All those in favor of moving the question? All opposed? Now we will vote on the amendment. All those in favor of accepting the amendment, which is the red portion up here, which is in further that these funds will be allocated for the sole purpose of assessing, evaluating, and improving the security of Westford Public Schools. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion fails. Now we will vote on. Okay, we'll be putting up another amendment here.
Just to explain, we're trying to, with town council, address the question of, is it a request for proposal or proposal? This is more of a housekeeping amendment, but we want to make sure that what we have, what we have up there, what we approve at town meeting is in fact the correct authorization. So that should be ready in a second.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Corbo from Town Council's office. I've recommended the addition of language based on questions from the floor as to what's being funded. A request for proposals or the actual hiring of consultants. In my opinion, this language would make it more clear that it's the hiring of consultants in accordance with the request for proposals that's being funded here. Not just the request for proposals itself.
I have a motion on the floor. Sign a second? Okay. All of those in favor of the amendment?
I have a question.
Oh. Discussion in a minute.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, I have a question. The Roden Bush Center is a private corporation. It's not actually a town thing. Does that mean that the town is now going to be providing security assessments for private corporations and whatnot? I'm just curious. Thank you.
That's, that's not germane to this, but Scott will.
The Roden Bush is a town building, so it's, it is germane.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be voting on just the amendment. If there's no more discussion, we'll be voting on just the amendment. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Now we vote on the motion as amended. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Okay, on to Article Three. Approve fiscal year 2019 budget transfers. I have a motion under Article Three as printed in the motion sheets. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Article Four, approve fiscal year 2019 capital appropriations. I have a motion under Article Four as printed in the motion sheets. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? These are recommended by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Capital Planning Committee. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Article Five, I have a motion under Article Five as printed in motion sheets. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes with a majority. Article Six. Acquisition to, acquisition of 63 Main Street. I have a motion under Article Six. Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? I see someone coming to the microphone. This was recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance. There is a presentation.
So the background on 66 Main Street is, you may recall, we had a building burned in, I think, March of 2016. The fire affected the attic and the roof. The bottom two floors of the structure remained intact, intact. In the spring of 2018, the Board of Selectmen directed the town manager to investigate what was happening with the property with a view towards potentially purchasing it. It took until September 11th for they noticed to come back from the owner that they planned to sell to the highest bidder. That, of course, compressed our timeline quite dramatically. So we did put in a bid for $600,000, which was accepted. We have had our architect, who's been working on the Roden Bush, another building about the same age, 1893 in the case of the house, take a look at the house and say, is it saligable? And in fact, he thought it was in remarkably good shape given its age and what's been happening to it. The purchase salesman agreed to by the selectmen and by the seller. So if town meeting were to approve the property, the environmental system would begin almost immediately after this to make sure there's no wastewater on the site, to look for lead paint, the kinds of things you would normally do when acquiring a property. Assuming those results are clean, we would have a closing on November 16th. At that point, if we have to do anything with hazmat, we would do it. Right now, our only knowledge is there's a beech tree. Look at the property on the left-hand side, a very large beech tree that is half-dead. And we would need to talk to an arborist, but there's a very strong chance that the, half the tree facing Roden Bush could give out in a good storm and damage Roden Bush. So that has to get addressed, no matter whether we buy that land or not. There is a tree issue. And if we were to purchase the land, we would, there is no definitive purpose in mind. We would form a committee to take a look at what is the best use for that property. A committee that would involve residents, particularly residents of the town center. But this is a building of high visibility to our town, and it deserves a thoughtful process in terms of what the purpose for that property should be. That will be a fairly broad community discussion. I think probably about a good year to take a look at that research. I expect to have Selectmen Finance Committee, permanent town building committee, a broad range of town committees on that project historical commission. But also, I really want to have a large town resident contingent on that property. So why are we doing this? Well, in a nutshell, we're trying to buy options. This is a distinctive building. It's been in the private town center for 120, 130 years. We want to be able to control what happens to that property and not somebody else, probably a developer. The architect report and some of its details, and I actually, I was fortunate, I walked through it with the realtor, with the town manager, assistant town manager. And it is surprising just how much of the building remains intact. Tiles around the wall, around the fireplaces are still there. All the rain scurrying is still there. They tore out the sheet rock so it wouldn't have mold from, for water, but all the wood products are still there. You can see the bones of the building as Bill has mentioned. So it appears to be in very good condition to salvage. This purchase, if we were to approve it tonight, allows town to make a decision as to what is the best use for that property. It's almost three acres. It abuts the Roden Bush, which is this town property. Behind it is town conservation land. And actually, the property is a little bit of an L ship, as I'll show you in a minute. It's actually, it actually abuts the town hall property in the back. If we have our year or more of study and that committee decides that it doesn't really have a town use, we still have the option to sell it back as a single-family home. We can put on that circle preservation restriction such that it will remain as it was in perpetuity. This is a picture of the building as it, as it is on the, on the left-hand side. You can see this is the rear view. You probably haven't seen that as much. In the back, it's three stories. The front is two. You see the aerial view. It shows you, in the back is a barn. It was once a stable, I believe. It's in remarkably good shape. That was not touched by the fire. There's been some work done to improve it on the second floor. The floors are all brand new. It's not insulated or wired, but it's a very attractive building in a great shape. This looks at the parcel. So the red you see is the, how far back the parcel extends in the rear. Well beyond what you might think of in terms of the barn. You also see where it extends over to the town apartment behind town hall. So conceivably, even if we were to find no use for the building as a town, and we wanted to repurpose as a residential building, we could still opt to take the parcel and cut off a piece behind town hall, expand parking a little bit further by ourselves, another 20, 30 spots for town hall parking, and then still release the building. And this takes a view of the, of the building. You can see, I think, even better how it relates to the town hall. You can see how the back, it goes to the full length of Roden Bush right up against the conservation land in the rear. And finally, of our, of our picture is, I think this is probably the best shot in terms of looking at a portion of the land relative to the other land that the town owns. Roden Bush on the, on my, on my right, and the conservation land in pink behind it with town hall in front of that. So if we don't purchase the land, what could happen to it? Well, it could stay a single-family dwelling. That's, that's possible. It is, we asked our planning department what could happen if a developer were to purchase it. And it could be used in the convention subdivision with probable division into two building lots. It could be converted into a multifamily building of four dwelling units if they had a permit from the Department of Appeals. You're seeing that, in fact, on Boston Road now, where we've had an older farmhouse reconverted into a multifamily building or in the process of being reconverted to a multifamily building. That first, Master and Law 41, Section 81L, it could be divided into, the lot could be divided, leaving the house and barn on separate lots, which lets you, again, create four dwelling units. Other possible uses, it could be a childcare facility. This is allowed under our current zoning. A nonprofit membership club, religious or educational purposes. It could be used for, for town use. As mentioned, we could use the back part of the lot or a portion of the back part of the lot for parking. And finally, it actually could be allowed to be used for sand and gravel. I hope that was not the highest possible use for that property. But by our zoning laws, that actually is a possibility. So if we were to purchase it, what's, what's the cost? Well, $600,000 is the cost. That is what we have in, if I purchase and sale to purchase the building. Talking to Don Mills, who was the architect that took a look at the building, he thinks $85,000 to secure it. That would be essentially building, reinforcing the second floor to support a temporary roof that would last us through, in fact, two winters to buy us some time to really do a good, careful process of what to do with the building. And if we were then to sell it, somebody who ever gets it will have it buttoned up, and we'll have no further deterioration of the structure. And then, of course, there's a verbal testing. I mentioned it's about 2,200. If you've all bought property before, you know, there's closing costs of 1150 in this case. And then a contingency of 11,650, whenever you do anything involving construction, you always have a contingency fund. So that 85,000 sort of implies a contingency of 11,650 just in case unforeseen happens. Which with a historic building, you always want to make sure you have that option. Although the good news is because it is so exposed inside, we've got a pretty good visibility in what it does look like. Now, how does this money affect you as a taxpayer? So we, that we, being the Board of Selectmen, have decided to use capital civilization as a means to fund this acquisition. The current balance in capital civilization is $866,000 and $247,000, to be precise. So if we were to spend the full $100,000, we'd have 166, 247 left. This is where I put on my Dan O'Donnell hat and try to behave like I'm a financial person. This is the expected inflow of money to the capital civilization fund in the coming two to three fiscal years, which indicates we can rebuild this expense, in fact, take it back to where we were a little bit higher by 2021. So this has no impact on your existing tax structure. It's all being paid for by civilization, which in fact, that's what we have capital civilization for, is unforeseen capital needs of the town. So with that, hopefully with my seven minutes, and we can take questions.
Buzz Galogly, 1 Patton Lane. First of all, I'd like to point out that I believe in privatization and non-government ownership of property. So my questions are going to be oriented in a negative fashion. I wonder, first of all, is the owner present?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Questions I had is, when this house burned down, was there insurance on the property?
That's a good question.
It was insured, yes.
It was not insured?
It was.
It was insured. So does the $600,000 purchase price account for that? How, how is this owner, is this owner getting more than $600,000 for the property?
I can't speak to how she spent her insurance money.
Okay, fine.
Or in fact, how much she got for insurance.
Okay, fine. But that insurance money is not, would not go to the town of Westford. It would go, obviously, to her.
Correct.
Okay. Secondly.
Right now, she owns the property, so it doesn't go to us.
Right.
Buzz, the questions come to me, please.
Buzz, the questions come to me, please.
I'm sorry, Ms. Moderator. Does the, has the committee considered the loss of tax revenue from the property?
Scott, please.
I don't, it's not these numbers, no. How much would tax...
All right.
Jody, do you have that? Thank you. Fifty, oh, fifty-nine hundred, okay. Would you like to come up?
Fifty-nine hundred a year. Lower than mine. This moderator, I'm sorry, my voice is going, but...
I know, I understand.
Also, I'd like to, to point out that this property would probably be a prime property for private buyers. And are we preempting that opportunity?
No. In fact, the, the owner's decision was to go to a private bid process, which began, we were, we were alerted to it November eleventh, December eleventh, rather. They were due within like ten days. And so her decision was not to go to the open market. Her decision was to use a private bid situation, and we were one of, I know, three bidders. I do not know who the two were. That's why it's private bid.
I see. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This microphone up here?
Yes, thank you. My name is Dana Barasano. I live at sixty-two Main Street. It's actually the eighteenth-century colonial, the white colonial, directly across the street from sixty-three Main. First off, I want to come into town. I think we have the same desires, which is to maintain the property and its historic value. Finance Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board, Historical Commission, and the residents, I think have all been working through the years to protect and maintain the look and use and feel that is Westford Center. With that said, I oppose the town owning or being involved in putting a municipal building at sixty-three Main Street. I believe this motion goes against the philosophy of what the town wants regarding the integrity of that center. I believe your motion just leaves it too broad in terms of what can happen to that piece of property. Westford Center, to me, provides a unique and wonderful experience for many reasons. The overarching reason is that the feeling of Westford Center radiates the types of activity, types and the types of activities that is useful. That feeling is a result of the residents' philosophy on maintaining the center as a place to reside and to congregate as a community, such as with the Apple Blossom Parade, whether it's the prom pictures, whether it's band concerts. We've all attended something there, and it feels like a neighborhood and a residence. Westford Center is one of five sections of the town that are on the National Historic Register. This was the result of the hard work of the Historical Mission, so we thank them for that over the years. This designation was approved by the Massachusetts Historic Commission because Westford Center has maintained its historic look and feel. This has not happened because it is regulated by an historic district or because it is mandated by the town through bylaws or zoning. It's because the owners within the center of town have done it on their own free will and desires. For me personally, it took my wife and I ten years to restore that home. Along Main Street, there are many other private owners that have done the same. Arnie and Claudette at fifty-eight Main Street continue to paint, continually painstakingly update their house. Kate and Mike, my current neighbors, they're, they're fairly new to town at sixty Main, have maintained the tradition of their house as a previous owner's Scottsdale. The Descents running Running Fox Farm at Three Depot continue to run and maintain the working stalls and barn. At fifty-nine Main, Dr. Raboyne, right next door, who's fairly new in the last few years, continues to update that property as well to restore hers. I give you all this background, and I say this, in every case, each owner took it upon themselves to maintain the historic nature of Westford Center. We love the feel of the center, and we believe it helps define Westford as a town. There were no regulations, no pressure from the Historic Commission. We did it because we love it. We believe it adds to the soul of Westford, and that can be done with sixty-three Main Street. An individual can buy this property and live in it as a private home as it's been lived in by the family since it was built as a wedding gift for Donald and Meta Cameron in eighteen ninety-three. Therefore, I oppose the town of Westford buying this property for any reason. I oppose putting municipal, municipal building on sixty-three Main. I believe a municipal building will remove a little bit of the soul of our town and erode the historic feel of the center and diminish what I believe the town residents want of the center. Those of us who will vote no on this, on this motion desire to have sixty-three Main Street maintain its historic significance by maintaining the look, the feel, and use of this property as it has been since eighteen ninety-three. Madam Moderator, after this vote, if the motion is defeated, and the vote is here tonight, deny the town the right to purchase this property. In order to effect what can be done when the property is placed on the open market, is my intention to present, present a resolution to tonight's meeting and respectfully request the selectmen be proactive in attending the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals hearing regarding any proposed changes at sixty-three Main. This resolution will ask the selectmen to represent the voters at this October fifteenth town meeting, who desire that the Adams House property at sixty-three Main and its carriage house be maintained to stand on that land as they stood prior to the fire in March two thousand sixteen, maintaining the integrity and its history and look and feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
So just, just two, I appreciate the remarks, and I think, as you began, we agree whether we disagree. There is no motion to make this property into a municipal building. That is not decided. That need not be the case. So it, it could be, but it need not be. In fact, I'd be surprised if that committee were to change the look and feel of the building. But so the bottom line is, we, we will not make it, we don't, we don't make a commitment tonight for this building, this building, sorry. And secondly, the selectmen can certainly be proactive in discussion with other boards and their resolution, but the Planning Board is a collective board, independent of the Board of Selectmen.
Tonight, in this motion, that it will be kept as an RA, single-family resident only, all right? I, I think the town would be behind that. I think the ambiguity is the problem that we have, and I think the fact that we have no idea what that would cost, and we have no idea what the usage, I think, just affords the town to think it could be anything. There has been stated by the town, I'm not, I forget the exact title of the, of the gentleman that stated it, but the size of the municipal building could, on that lot, could be anywhere from fourteen thousand to sixteen thousand square feet. That, to me, is a municipal building. That changes the look and feel. So I, I feel the motion in, in and of itself is slightly disingenuous because of the ambiguity.
Thank you. You have something to say, Scott?
I just had one thing. So this is, if we, if we were to purchase this property, we do form this committee to make regulations back to the Board of Selectmen. If that motion were to be anything that involves spending money, we're back here in front of you again, because we have to have the town approve any capital spending. So this decision tonight does not bind us to a, any particular outcome, but I can guarantee you, it does bind us to, if we want to do anything to it, we're back here in front of you in a year or two years to, to get your blessing. So if we propose a use that is not consistent with the town's desire, it'll get shot down.
Madam, Madam Moderator, the challenge that I have with that statement is that you're seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole, and you won't be able to go to open market with that price, because it was a private bid, it never went on the open market. And the reason is, I was one of the three people who expressed interest.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the center.
So Bob Instral, Corn Crossing. I, I may have missed something, but in, in my experience, whenever the town buys property, we need to have a current appraisal and are constrained by that. So I guess my question is, do we have an appraisal for the building in its current condition?
Scott, can you answer that?
No, we do not. I haven't actually had time to get one, but also, we don't need one. If you have to have an appraisal, if you are buying with CPC funds, because then you must pay no more than the appraised value. But if you're not using CPA money, which we don't tend to do here, you don't need to appraise.
Gentlemen over here.
Yes, Dave Earl, HBO Colony Drive. I'm supportive of doing this. I think Scott has outlined a plan that will take some time to evaluate what the ultimate outcome is, but it would solve a major problem we have at town hall, in that we do not have enough parking. And this lot is very big, appears to be very big, and I think creatively, the town could do something very important, keep the center beautiful, if you will. Perhaps provide some parking for town hall, which we need badly, and I think it would enhance the neighborhood and the town itself. And just one other comment. I think we have to move these things along, and we can't get into a dialogue with the people at the mics going back and forth, because it drags out the meeting way too long, and that's never the way town meeting was meant to be structured. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, hold your applause, please. Hold your applause. Is there some of the opposition? No. Okay. Senator, Senator...
Mike Green, Hill Valley Road. I'll try to speak quickly then. So the question on general, I think to Dana's point, the, the motion says general municipal uses. Is there suggested wording that would then leave the options open to which you speak of, Scott?
You direct the questions to me.
I'm sorry, Madam Moderator. Yes, thank you.
I'm not sure what the question is.
Well, it says general usable uses. I think the concern raised by residents is that it says what it says. So if we slice it and flip it and maintain it as a single-family residence, which I think sounds like the sense of the meeting, does this wording bind us to anything in the future?
I'm going to defer to a lawyer on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you through you, Madam Moderator. So the, the term general municipal purposes means that it's, it's held by the town, but not for any specific reason. So as, as Mr. Hazleton mentioned, you know, the, the town's going to develop a plan for reuse of this property, and to the extent that implementation of that plan is going to require the expenditure of money, which it probably will, it would have to come back to town meeting for approval to implement that plan. But what this vote does is it gives the town the flexibility to develop that plan without having a specific purpose, like for school purposes or conservation purposes, something like that.
Madam Moderator, another quick question if I can. So if, for instance, some of it is sliced off for parking and the principal resident is sold, does it then have to be deemed surplus property or something in the future? Yes? Okay. Thank you.
And that's Sarullo, North Hill Road. My question is, I, I'm leaning towards voting for it, but my question is what, how the Finance Committee voted. It said we would get that vote.
Oh, the Finance Committee voted eight to one recommending, and the Board of Selectmen was unanimous. Senator, microphone?
Karen Cavino, Dempsey Way. I just want to know, there are no restrictions on this property, such as it's registered as a historical property. I, I want to know if there's restrictions that would prevent any other person from buying it and doing whatever they want with that piece of property. Like, the house does not have to remain.
Scott, do you know the answer to that?
Well, they can't do whatever they want, no. But as I had indicated on a prior slide, sorry. There are allowed uses that would be other than private residence, but no, they can't go constructing a office building, for example.
Can I just provide one answer that you didn't provide? Lot Shaft or South Lakeville Road, former historical commission.
Do you want to step in front of the microphone?
The demolition delay bylaw would apply to that property, so there would be a six-month prohibition against demolition. So that's one thing that would protect the property temporarily, just six months.
Thank you.
Shakira Greta, Mohican, please. I request to move the question.
Did you, did you have any...
I was just going to answer the question through you, Madam Moderator. Yes. So the question was whether or not there are any restrictions on reuse or modification of this building. The Board of Selectmen has obtained an opinion from an architect that there are no such restrictions. The residence is in the same category as the Roden Bush, listed in the West, Westford Center, National Historic District, but since there is no local historic district, no special approvals would be required, other than as, as was just mentioned, the demolition delay bylaw would apply.
Thank you. There was, was there a move, move question? Was there a second? All in favor of moving the question? All opposed? No more questions? Okay. So we will take a vote. We need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of acquiring sixty-three Main Street, say aye. All opposed? Passes with the two-thirds. Article seven, reduce amount raised by taxes in fiscal twenty nineteen. I have a motion under Article seven is printed in the motion.
Madam Moderator, is it too late to ask for a count? At least a standing count on the last, on the last article?
No, it's not. Okay. We'll, we'll do a standing count.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Seven, I'm sorry, seven people have to also agree with you. Do I have seven people that will, one, two, three, four, five, six? Seven people need to ask for a hand count. Okay. All those in favor of the article, please stand up, and you'll be counted.
What?
Okay. Everyone who's standing up, please stand, sit down. All those opposed to acquiring sixty-three Main Street, please stand up.
All those opposed to acquiring 63 Main Street, please stand up. Okay. Twenty-three ayes and sixty-eight nays. Motion passes for two-thirds. Article six, I have a motion under Article seven as printed in the motion sheets. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? It's to reduce amount raised by taxes in fiscal year 2019. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. I have a motion under Article eight as printed in the motion sheet. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Article nine, I have a motion under Article nine as printed in the motion sheets. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Did I hear no? Motion passes. I have an article under, I'm sorry, I have a motion under Article ten as printed in the motion sheets. Is there a second? Any discussion? We have a presentation.
No, no, no presentation. I don't want to take your time, but I did want to point out, we have this program now, if you're over sixty years old, you can work for the town and earn money towards your relief of property taxes. The new point I want to make tonight is we've actually added a wrinkle, which is if you are disabled and you cannot work for the town, but you have a fellow who is willing to work in your stead, that person under this change would be allowed to work and get tax relief for a disabled individual. I think that's worth pointing out. I think it's the great spirit of the community. I didn't want that to go without any comment, so, thank you.
Okay. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support this. The Finance Committee tabled this, they needed more information, they want to ask some more questions.
Dennis Galvin, Ida Conker wrote, not speaking for the Finance Committee, but would like to ask, we ask for some information with regards to the criteria that's used to award these tax breaks, and also, could you disclose who it is that administers this program, so who grants the tax breaks?
It's Jennifer. Is Jennifer here?
Or Annette.
There we go. Jennifer Claro, Director of the Senior Center.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Selectman, and Town Manager. The Council on Aging administers this program. And basically, there's the application process allows any property owner, resident that's sixty or over to make application for this program.
Thank you. That's enough? Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Moderator, Dennis Galvin, Ida Conker wrote, this is a very simple amendment, doesn't have to do anything with writing. I just would like to move that this article be referred to the Tax Slider Committee, so that some standards and some rules about how this is going to be applied can be developed. Thank you very much.
Well, just speaking as a member of the Board of Selectmen who actually gave the Slider Committee this charter, this is not part of the charter of the Slider Committee, so I don't think that would be the best use of their time.
Jennifer?
Oh, Jennifer's over there.
I'm sorry.
I work at the Senior Center for people that don't know. Just to add what to Jennifer said, so the Tax Work Program's been in effect many years, I don't know how many years. And it is administered through the Senior Center, and people can apply, as she said, sixty and older. I just wanted people to know that currently, there's twenty-five jobs throughout the town, so whether it's the Town Hall, or the Library, or the Senior Center, and we had over fifty applicants for those twenty-five jobs this year. So, we end up having to do, first-time applicants get a slot, and then if, so if we have eighteen new applicants, they get the slot first, and then seven people, if we still have the seven slots for the twenty-five, then they're put into a lottery pool and we draw. So, just so you know, we could even use more slots for this program. So, they work the hundred-and-thirty-seven hours and get the fifteen-hundred dollars. It's all on the green sheet at the front desk, so I feel like we already do kind of have some guidelines, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay.
I have a quick question about it. Is this considered taxable income, or is the town paying Medicare or anything on it?
Yes, it is.
It is considered taxable income. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have a motion under Article eleven as presented in the motion sheets. Is there a second? Elizabeth will do a quick presentation.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight to discuss, here we go, low-income senior tax relief, eighteen months So, the history of this motion tonight is that eighteen months ago, at our annual town meeting in 2017, there was a citizens petition for senior tax relief, and at that meeting, there was a resolution to send this to a committee to bring something back that was tailor-made for our community and not just copied from another town. Shortly after, the Board of Selectmen set up the Senior Low Income and Disabled Tax Relief Committee. We have nicknamed them the Slider Committee. We, the committee received input and review from numerous committees and town employees, and they strove to balance ease of implementation with the program while reaching the homeowners who had the most need. What we're presenting tonight has been researched and built upon existing programs in other communities. Before I go on, I wanted to say thank you to the many people who worked on this program, and if the moderator would permit, that we have a round of applause for the folks that have given many, many hours.
I will permit it.
This committee met every Wednesday morning at 8:00 a.m. for more than a year, I think, year and a half, for at least two hours every week, so they put in a considerable amount of time and thought into this program. The goals for the program were first to identify the target population among seniors, low-income, and disabled taxpayers, and then to design a program that was simple to implement and to provide the most benefit to the individuals with the most need, and finally, to determine how to pay for the program. So what the committee learned was that our low-income homeowners are longtime elderly residents. So in that group of senior, low-income, and disabled homeowners that we were targeting, you may recall at the spring town meeting, we did pass a program for folks with disabilities. We determined that the low-income population is captured by a senior, is captured within the senior population. So the property tax increases, as I'm sure we all can understand and know, have surpassed Social Security and pension increases over the past several years. So we currently have the Massachusetts Circuit Breaker Program, which sets a target of paying no more than ten percent of your income towards property taxes. And so if you look at the bottom of the screen, we have a chart, just some examples there. If you have a property valued at three-hundred thousand, your taxes would be four-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-four dollars. If your annual income is thirty-five thousand dollars, which is quite typical for the population we're targeting with this program, they would be paying fourteen percent of their income to taxes. So the qualifications for the program that we're proposing include that you have to qualify for the state Circuit Breaker Program. You have to be at least sixty-five years old. The third criteria is that we're targeting this to eighty percent of the median assessed value of single-family homes. Currently in Westford, that would be homes that are assessed at four-hundred thousand dollars or less, and that captures thirty-three percent of our homeowners. The asset limit is two times forty-one C. Forty-one C is a local program that has a benefit of two-thousand dollars a year. If you want to check, if you picked up a green paper, this gives more details about the forty-one C program. I want to point out here that home equity is not considered in your assets. And then at the bottom, you can see the income limits that we came up with. We tried, and you can see in many of these criteria, we tried to tie them to numbers outside of our community. We didn't try, we didn't want to set hard numbers such as four-hundred thousand dollars for home limit. We tried to tie them to other markers that they would change in the coming years, and we wouldn't have to come back to town meeting to change those numbers. So the financial model for how this will work, there will be a variable benefit to homeowners. So all the applications will come in at one time, there will be an open window for applications every year, and the homeowners with greater need will get a greater, will receive greater assistance. The maximum benefit to any homeowner will be fifty percent of their tax bill. The range of benefit will be from nothing to three-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, which is fifty percent of the tax bill of homes assessed at four-hundred thousand dollars. We know that the maximum number of homeowners qualifying this past year would have been three-hundred-and-forty-seven homeowners, and that's based on the participation in the Circuit Breaker Program. The funding source is the Assessor's overlay account. We are required by the state to put money into our overlay account every year that is held there in the event that someone challenges their taxes or there are outstanding issues with commercial properties. I would, if you have questions about this part, I'll defer to Dan. But we have that money available in the account, so we could fund this program for the first three years. The maximum cost to Westford we are proposing is point-two-five percent of the levy. If the program were to start this year, that would be a hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. And finally, we are including a three-year sunset clause, which means this program will automatically expire in three years, which will force us to revisit this program and approximately, you know, one year into the program, we'll take the numbers and the information, and then determine how we want to craft this program going forward and figure out a permanent funding mechanism at that time. So in summary, we're targeting residents who are just above the limits for forty-one C, which is two-hundred percent of the federal poverty limit. We've attempted to balance simplicity of the program with targeting the program to those who have the most need. We're limiting the scope of the program to fund it out of the overlay account. We have the three-year sunset clause, which will allow us to evaluate the program before making a bigger or long-term commitment. And finally, since taxes and exemptions are governed by mass general laws, a special act is required by the legislature to approve a tax relief article. So the article we passed in the spring for individuals with disabilities is currently making its way through the state. This article will also need to go on to the state and receive approval at the state, and then come back for another vote at town meeting before we can start the program.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Are there any questions?
Hi, everyone. Mike Chason, West Prescott Street. Thank you, Selectman Almeida, for this, for your presentation. I'm very tight with the money I like to spend, so I really appreciate that the committee put in that sunset clause. I would be cautious, though, it is an entitlement, and it's always hard to take away entitlement. So, that's kind of my concern about it, that there's no caps in place. So, for future implementations of it, I'd like to see if the committee could do something along those lines.
Thank you. Senator?
Hi. On section three B, you're stipulating a single applicant aged sixty-five or older, if a couple together own the property and/or it's left as life use but left to their children in a trust or some other form, should neither of those cases be considered? Paul here, would you be able to?
Paul Fessbender?
I'm sort of wrestling with this, because I'm not sure exactly how the wording of the bill that's going in is worded. Our intent certainly was that the benefit would only apply if there is at least one resident, property owner, that is sixty-five or older.
I would have expected that, Madam Moderator, but that's not how it's written, so maybe some wordsmithing might help.
Annette Cerulo, North Hill Road. I was also on the committee. I mean, I think one thing we have to keep in mind, too, is that this household has got to apply and get circuit breaker. So a married couple that files jointly, they don't have to both be of age sixty-five, right? And so, they have to at least, one of the criteria is they have to get circuit breaker first from the state. And, you know, right now, this year, they can get up to a thousand eighty off their tax bill, so, well, not off the tax bill, they get a thousand eighty credits. So they have to get that first before they can even come to us for that program. It's a criteria. So, but as far as trust, I mean, a lot of the other exemptions that we have currently in the town, I don't believe folks with trust get those exemptions. So, is Paul here? Paul could answer that. There he is. Paul from the assessor's. Yeah, Paul from the assessor's office knows this stuff by heart.
Thank you, Paul.
Principal Assessor. Trusts are allowed as long as the people who are applying are trustees and not beneficiaries of the trust. They have to maintain the trust status. Likewise, if there is an estate, if there's a life estate, they also qualify, just like the other exemptions do. So, life estate doesn't mean they've given up their rights to their home, that they retain all of their rights likewise with a trust.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That said, I think some wordsmithing might be needed by our attorney, because neither of those two details are represented here.
Thank you.
Thank you through you, Madam Moderator. I wouldn't recommend changing the language at this point. It specifies what the criteria is. It talks about property being owned and occupied by the applicant. The definition of owner is a legal term, and when property is owned in trust, then the owner is considered someone who has a beneficial interest in the trust. So, my recommendation would be to leave the language as is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have a motion under Article twelve as printed in the motion sheets. Is there a second?
I think there's a typo. I'm not sure exactly. With respect to the annual payment in lieu of personal tax for a term of years relative to a parcel, I believe a number is missing. Are we specifying a number of years?
I'm sorry, this is Article twelve?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, did I jump ahead of the vote?
No, no, that's okay. We- Read it again. This is Article twelve, I just, I just asked for a second, and we've got a second, so we can, I was asking, now I ask for, is any discussion? So that's your discussion, so tell us, tell me what line.
It's the third line, with respect to annual payments in lieu of personal taxes for a term of years relative to a parcel of land located in Ten Commerce Way. Fourth line, I believe we're missing the number of years. And it's, it's as it appears in the signed warrant as well.
Through you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
So, what this article does is, it authorizes the Board of Selectmen to negotiate an agreement for a term of years that they're going to negotiate. So, so you're not, you're not specifying what the term of years is, you're just authorizing them to negotiate an agreement for whatever term they deem in the best interest of the town.
Sorry, completely misunderstood, thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
Steve Briarly, Sixteenth Falls Drive. I'm a bit confused, my understanding of pilots is they are normally used for nonprofit organizations that would not pay property taxes. If I read this article correctly, these are limited liability corporations, profit-making entities. Why are we doing a pilot, and why are they not paying property taxes as commercial organizations?
Paul Pliff will answer that question. He's behind you.
The reason of the pilot is, last three or four appellate tax board cases have ruled that basically solar entities are in fact exempt. And so, we, our hands are tied, and it's based on a law that was written in nineteen eighty-five. So at some point, we hope the legislature will have to change that. But yes, they are exempt, and that has kind of spent the face value of the law, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Moderator, despite what we were just told, I thought that at a prior Selectmen's meeting, we were told that the negotiation took place, and it was for a fifteen-year agreement. So why wouldn't we put the fifteen years in there? Because I think if we said five versus fifteen, folks might vote differently.
Paul, would you mind answering that, please?
At the time when the article was being put together, we had not reached an agreement. We had several back-and-forths with the other party, and probably about about a week or so ago, yes, we finally did reach agreements. It's for fifteen years, but the appellate tax board also has upheld for twenty years, so. Rather than twenty years, where a lot of pilot agreements were, we're doing ours for fifteen years.
So, I'm, I'm following up on what the first gentleman asked, could we insert fifteen in there? A term of fifteen years.
Paul, would you mind answering that, please?
Well, that's up to the Board of Selectmen, and that is part of the agreement. So all this is allowing the Board of Selectmen to enter into the process to reach an agreement with them, which tentatively we have done at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
I have one question with respect to the agreement, does it pass to, in the event of a sale of the facility, or is it tied to the coroner who's negotiating the agreement?
Paul Pliff will answer that, please.
Yes, it can, and it's within the terms of, of the agreement. So the town would have to approve the transfer of the pilot agreement if the property, if the personal property was.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing no, no other discussion, take the vote. Oh, and someone was, one more question over here.
Alan Moyer, Sixty-nine Forest Road. I'm a little confused, what happens if we defeat this motion? I, I don't, it sounds like there's a whole bunch of negotiations that have happened, does that all fall apart? What happens next?
Paul.
If, if the motion is defeated, basically what would happen is we take the next step, and we will go to appellate tax board, where we most assuredly lose. And then at that point, any taxes that have been paid, they are in appeals for the last two fiscal years, all of their tax dollars will go back to them, and we will get nothing. Unless we enter a pilot agreement after the fact, and then we start the process all over again.
Thank you. Any more questions?
If that wasn't clear, I was suggesting we amend to include the fifteen years.
You have an amendment? You need to write it down?
The number fifteen between the word of and years that the first gentleman pointed out.
Scott.
I think, I think the key is that we have a tentative agreement, not a final agreement. So if we put in fifteen and we get twenty, or ten, then we're in trouble, so I think until we get a firm agreement, we want to leave it flexible. And, but right now, the, the tentative one is fifteen.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, we'll take the vote. She. I'm sorry. Okay, do we, we'll, we'll vote on the amendment, all those in favor, I'll accept. Okay, you need to put it in writing if you're going to, we're going, no, you're not, okay. Okay, now we'll just, hearing no further discussion, we'll, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? This motion passes unanimously. Having completed our business here this evening, may I have a motion to adjourn the special town meeting? Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, thank you. Thanks, and have a great evening.